Okay.
I think it's road plan that we're going to order.
So we're gonna get started, can you do this? My name is Juliette Caffler, I am the Vice Chair of the Planning Board. Anne is not here tonight, so I will be acting in her spot for only a second. First step here is roll call and declaration of a quorum. We definitely have a quorum, so I think that's good. Second thing is the annual election of officers. So I'm going to elect a new chair. And Anne stepping down as chair.
I'll nominate John Hoven.
I'll second that.
And I'll nominate Juliette as Vice Chair, just I think we need officially, assuming you still want it, okay.
We should do the first nomination first.
Oh, sorry.
So all favor, in favor say aye.
So now I'm, now I can...
Now you're the chair, so you're going to...
Now I'm favoring chair and nominate Juliette for the Vice Chair.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And it passes. Okay, then the next step is amendments to the agenda. And...
Just one thing that I'm kind of concerned about, I guess, is under our bylaws, it says that we have a secretary that is not to be a member of the board. In the past, we had our IT tech at the university, whether she reviewed the recordings and formulated the minutes from that, I don't know if that was her process, but she was the one that was taking care of that. So I, how do we want to handle that as a board?
That is a good question. That's a question I have for Mitch to see, might, the initial feedback from Mitch when we talked about, you know, the support to the board, and the good news is George is available to handle the kind of stuff he's been doing for us and working on codes and whatever. The initial feedback was there isn't anybody on the staff who could do, who will do that or can do that, insufficient staff rate. So I would like to sit down with Mitch and re, you know, re-look at that a little bit. I mean, it's one thing to, I know Tyler and others have picked it up with helping the minutes and George is going to help with that, but when we get into mailings and a whole bunch of other stuff, that sort of overwhelms, you know, the volunteer aspect of this. It becomes a pretty much a full-time effort for a day or so to make sure we're giving that.
Well, then there are monies in the budget for paying the individual.
Yeah, and that's what I'd like to go back to the town, interim town manager and say, you know, are we going to do that, you're adding a third clerk, is that person available or is there another way to do that? I don't want to dump it on us in recognizing that the planner's got 32 hours, correct, 32 hours? 20 hours a week.
20.5.
Eighteen. That's without vacation. So I guess that's what I would like to do, is get back to you at the next meeting and say, this is what you say.
And the other option, whether our code enforcement officer many times is involved in these meetings, now whether that would be their responsibility, I mean, that's something else that you can present to Mitch also.
I will do that. I think his, that role from Bob in the past is George is going to pick up that piece of the pie. I mean, getting packets together for this meeting and doing some of that other stuff. But I'll also ask if that person's available. Or can, out of our funds, can we pay for four hours a month for one of the clerks or somebody else to pick up the secretary role?
I do understand that minutes are being taken tonight, right, we have two people. At least for tonight.
Oh, that's that young lady right there. Well, thank you, who are?
Kimberly.
Kimberly, okay.
I also wonder...
Maybe it's been resolved. Maybe it has been resolved?
Tonight, she said. I also wonder if we could potentially immediately throw it out to the public to see if anyone's interested in being secretary.
Sure.
Potentially, you know.
Yeah, I don't...
I don't know about paying or whatever, you know, that, but, you know.
You know, I think Tyler has taken a lot of minutes too. I mean, he's an alternate, now whether that fits into it.
Well, we would need to change our bylaw.
I know. Yeah, well, yeah, different options. Okay, and then Juliette, they're all, all good ones, but I think that if somebody wants to step up, if we want to pay, the intent, my idea would be to not keep tasking Tyler to do that, so...
Well, again, also the bylaw, he is part of the board.
That's true, to be the official secretary.
Okay, so you'll get back to us on that.
I will, I'll leave an answer on that one.
Your first job.
So we never even got to number three, we didn't really. So number three is amendments to the agenda. Are there, is there anything, anybody, Juliette?
I do, I have, I have kind of like one main one, but something I would like to bring up regarding the Conservation Commission and their potential involvement with the planning board. If possible, if you guys would like to bring it up right after number six before we get into new business. That's okay.
I see no objections, I see no problem with it.
Okay, thanks.
Any other amendments to the agenda? If not, we will add a 6A to be discussion on Conservation Commission. For acceptance of the minutes for January 5th, February 2nd, and April 6th.
I don't know that we accept them as presented.
I'll second.
The only comment I have is that on one of them, the, I think it was the workshop, would, says that the next meeting will be May 3rd and I think it's actually May 4th, so can we make that? I don't know that that's super important, let's make it a condition that we change that one note.
As amended.
We have a motion and a second, do we have, the vote would be all in favor, say aye? Aye, opposed? If they are approved? Informational exchange, town officials, you have anything from the town officials? Ken, did you want to be a town official?
For George, maybe?
Well, George, just, did you have any you want to speak?
Yes, I did include under this item a memo and also the outcomes of the town meeting. I think pretty much everybody's familiar, but just to make sure we're all on the same page on that note. There were four proposed amendments to land use ordinance, two of those passed. That was the appeals process in terms of what the Board of Appeals jurisdiction is. And the second one was the fee schedule, and I will be working with town manager to prepare a fee schedule for adoption by the board. And then the amendments for resource protection, this voted down, so zoning map is as it is currently for those areas. And then finally, the parts for roads, which was going to clarify some of the issue of approval of roads outside of subdivisions and backlot access, again, that was also voted down. So the regulations that we have in effect will continue, so you will be seeing road maintenance agreements for all of these outside subdivision roads and code officer and road commissioner will be approving the plans for those. And I'm pleased to announce that the town has hired code enforcement officer Alan Pullman from Canyon Falls, and I believe he's starting tomorrow, he's going to be phasing in over the next month, finishing up at Canyon Falls. And then finally, I did include in the packet, which I distributed to the town manager and select board chairman, a memo addressing a couple of issues that have come up, even as recently as the workshop last time. And that is the issue of impacts on schools, what the planning board's jurisdiction is over that issue when it reviews projects. And then secondly, clarification on the growth limits and what would trigger a review of the possible moratorium cap. So that memo is in your packet, and we have to answer the questions on any of that information.
Any questions for Mr. Thebarger, what he put in the packet or discuss tonight?
The one, the fee schedule, the one you anticipate presenting that to timeline, what we're going to follow to the select board?
I've talked to Mitch about presenting something to them on May 10th.
And that's, is that basically what the existing fees are?
Pretty much, yeah. Plus a plan for updating.
Did that handle totally within the select board? Because it doesn't have to come to us for volunteering or anything. So if anyone has any input on what fees are or should be, that will be coming out here next week, I guess, right? Did you say May 10th?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else for town officials? Okay, then residents, for the residents, this is an opportunity to make comments about things other than the two projects that are listed here. So general issues, concerns that you want to comment on, reference planning. So if you're here specifically to talk about one of the two new business things, we'll get to those later.
Actually, hold on, sorry, just a process question. The sketch plan and the revision of Bowie Hill, is that open to public comment? Are we going to have public comment for those?
Normally the sketch plan, based on the ordinance is not. So when you get into the next phase of it after that, then it will be subjected to comments. You get into the next page, you're looking at a site walk and the public is invited to a site walk. It was like, if you wanted to get that.
So I was just curious if, is it like, if the public does have any questions on this, can they not ask them now? Do they have to wait till after we hear it first? I'm just, I don't know.
Well, for the sketch plan, I think Alan did it very well, which is tonight is a discussion between the developer and us. And then at the preliminary plan, which if it goes forward would be the next stage, that's when we'd hold public comments.
I guess what I mean is right now, the informational exchange...
This is about just planning in general, yeah, not one of the two projects.
Not application specific, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to...
So maybe they want to get up and say how happy you are on the chair or...
You're trying to make the town self-hostile.
Can board members make comments?
They're okay, keep waiting. Ms. Roy?
Hi, I'm Heather Roy from 777 Hallwall Road, and I have a few questions tonight. George, when I was looking at your memo regarding the agenda packet, we had talked about impact fees at that workshop, and this says funds collected to be applied to plan expansions within a reasonable timeframe. At the workshop, it sounded like that was a specific amount of time, that didn't seem clear in this. So is it a, you referenced 10 years, I'm wondering where that information comes from.
Is this the format that you're going to use? Because I'm a little bit uncomfortable going through memo and answering a lot of specific questions.
Yeah, this is really intended more for comments, but since we've had that question, could you just answer that one?
Well, yeah, let's...
It's okay if you just want to answer now. That's fine, I mean, exchange, I thought, back and forth.
It's more about comments than it is questions.
Honestly, I feel like maybe just a little bit more process on what this is. This is a way of informational exchange to our agendas, I love it, but just a little more boundaries.
And I think part of the problem is this was in your bylaws, you weren't doing this historically, so I think we're going to have to work through some of those formats.
Just generally, George, would you mind just, what were your thoughts on what this informational exchange is?
Well, again, these are your bylaws, they've been in effect since 2006. It hasn't been done recently, as I understand it, but that's what's on the agenda, so that's what I put onto this agenda. And my understanding is it's an opportunity for people to come in and bring up issues that should be addressed, for example, but I don't think it's necessarily intended to be a review. I feel like a review of a report with questions and answers for 10 minutes.
Okay, so maybe no questions, maybe comments, right? And then we can take that.
Or request that we provide more information.
Yeah, questions to be answered, but it's hard for me at this point.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, that's fine.
That'll work, thank you.
That helps, okay. Okay, so this will be a question then that somebody can hopefully answer next time, although I think it'll probably get addressed. A process question, when there's a revision to a subdivision plan, is there a public hearing associated with that? You don't have to answer that now, if you want to answer it now, great, if you don't want it, that's fine too. And then I feel like...
That's probably what we could do today, right? Everybody knows that.
There is a public input process, if you're talking about Bowie Hill.
Well, I was trying to be respectful of the fact that you didn't want me to ask a specific...
Once a, a previous approved plan is submitted and it comes up for revision, it is open up to be totally reviewed.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to try to be respectful of this process, so that's all I'm going to say for tonight. And then when a little bit more rules are around what this actually looks like, then I'll come back. Okay, thanks. Yep.
And I was somewhat remiss on a lot of questions, whether it be about projects specific or in general. We do have this great new asset with Mr. Thebarger. So if you've got a question that you don't get answered or you don't want to wait till the next meeting or whatever about how wide is a road in the subdivision, if you can't find it in the ordinance, then I would commend to you, Mr. Thebarger, to do that. And also, just as kind of as a reminder, once we get in, in fact, I'll hold this comment until we get to subdivisions, about next part eight and so on and so forth. So cut you off short, are there any other general comments? My haircut, anything? In that case, we have an item for non-residents, are there any non-residents who want to make a comment this evening? Let's see, done, I'm trying to get back to my agenda. But that covers informational exchange. One thing I would like to add on that in reference to the town officials, and I talked to the town manager about this, what I'd like to do is provide feedback in person or in a letter from us, the planning board, to the selectmen. So when they meet, either I would be there or I would, we'd send them an email or whatever that says, this is what we did at our last meeting, here's the projects we talked about, here's some of the comments that came up from the public. So it just kind of reinforced that line of communications between the selectmen and the planning board, and then they can come back and give us whatever feedback they want or anything that they'd like us to consider in the future.
I like that idea. One recommendation is maybe you or someone goes to the select board meetings, they have a time when they ask for official minutes or whatever, and then that way you're on record talking about it and if they have any questions.
Yeah, and Jordan, and Mitch, excuse me, Mitch invited me today to do, to do that, so...
That's a lot of work.
As I, as I told you, I have no life, retired, I had no life before I retired, so since it's, I don't mind, I don't mind doing that. So, anything else on that topic? And the other thing, it's as good a time as any, that I did not do after the election, was to publicly thank Anne Torregosa, who's been the president for this planning board. I won't say for many years, because I don't want to date her, but Anne was a superb president, member, active community. So if you see her, I'll be about her, you need flowers on Snow Road, please thank Anne, because she did a great job.
She's not beating.
And she is also going to be back, and so she promised. And we will hold her to that path, so, but thank her when you, when you see her. So any other, is there any other continuing business? And then the one thing I have is scheduling, we talked about at the last workshop, scheduling another workshop to cover changes to the codes and coordinating that with the con-plan. And so there's twice tonight, I'm going to ask you to take a look at your calendars, and I don't want to, again, I'm retired and have no life, but I don't, many of you do, are not retired and do have a life, so I don't want to jam a bunch of meetings in there. But what did the, the first thing that we need to schedule probably to keep things on track is the site visit for Hallwall. And then at some point in time after that, allowing some time, schedule the workshop.
Yeah, how about we do the...
Can we get, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there's...
I don't know what the, what's the fancy password?
I think there's a guest, the gentleman, your password?
Yeah, he needs a password now. He needs a guest, does he?
It's probably the phone number.
IT person, do you know, Kim?
I think it's the phone number of the town.
Just the...
Yeah.
She's also checking.
How about we plan the site walk during the app stage coming up, right? And then maybe at the end, we can schedule that.
We'll do that?
You want to do that?
Okay, I'll give you that, just please remind me to do that. Okay, so then, any other continuing business? So then on to the first of the new business, which is...
You added 6A to it.
Oh, geez, I forgot Julie already.
Do you have the password?
I believe it is the phone number, it's...
10 digits?
Uh, I believe it's, it's, yeah, it's 2073532561.
2532561?
I'll be the 207.
207353.
So what I would like to make goes to the board is that we utilize Conservation Commission as an official reviewer of all subdivisions and any application that we do would be important for someone in the conscom to review for resource issues. The Conservation Commission is really the go-to for resource, environmental impacts. They know the regs, they have the experience, and they have the desire to do this. Thought process is they would be invited for all subdivisions, but for other applications that, any application actually, maybe you could at the beginning, when you're starting to hear it, you could vote on what you want them to be part of the review process or not. It doesn't have to be that formal, whatever, whatever you think. They would participate or, you know, join our meet, not join, not here, but be part of the meetings during the applications. You know, they would be part of the site walks, they would provide comments and questions.
Are you saying that we treat them as a full member?
Yeah.
So just we would get their input, we would say we've got Hallwall subdivision, please...
Yeah, it would be maybe a little bit more than that, we would say, hey, our subdivision reviews start today, please, you know, be here for the meetings, or at least watch the video, review the document, we'll give it to you guys. I think that...
Would that have to be coordinated with their scheduled meetings? I'm just looking at the timeframe. If we're going through a review in one right now, and now we're looking at the possibility of doing a site walk, and we would be invited in the commission, is that going to fit into that schedule? Are they going to have to do it as a commission versus an individual?
No, 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 I would, I would recommend that we don't have to worry about their schedule, that they make it work.
Okay. I don't see that as different than anybody, a normal citizen, they're more than welcome to do it. And just adding them as, here's, and they can pull it, the same information now, so they're welcome to, you know, come up in the next, in a hearing on whatever subdivision, say this is the Conservation Commission, and hopefully they would provide feedback prior to that, say we're really concerned about this creek or whatever it may be.
Were you thinking of something like beyond that? Because I was sort of thinking the same, like, they can go on the sidewalks and the public comment.
Yeah, well, it's almost like we would look to them for their review. I mean, how many times have we been like, oh, you know, there's a resource here, what's the regs here? I don't know, you know? So it wouldn't be like too official, but it would be a step up from the normal public, I, it's like that.
Probably the devil's always in the detail, I think. Clearly there'd be no veto, you know, just because they, just, it's no different than a historic commission or indot or emdot or whatever, that, you know, we take, we get their advice and all that other stuff.
What would that process look like? Like when we got the agenda, if there's say a new plan, we just forward it to the Conservation Commission?
It actually wouldn't, we really wouldn't have to do anything. The conscom's kind of on board with what we're doing already, they're pretty active with what's going on. They would just be here, and then we would look to them for their comments. Whether or not we agree with their comments and follow through with their comments and recommendations that... It really wouldn't be any more work for us, it would just be more eyes on review process.
Welcome to do that now, I don't know that we have to formalize that process, I was going to dig it up there.
Or maybe it's just we, if everyone's cool with it, then just we will start to hear from them more than we are.
So you're on that question, actually.
Thank you, but I want to be part of that when I'm on. But yes, okay, great.
Yeah, I was hoping we were going to talk about resource protection and the Conservation Commission, so...
Yeah, George mentioned that, I think, can we talk about that maybe at the end?
Absolutely. Any other 6B business, 6C business?
Actually, yes, I have one more thing regarding the conscom. Just this is an idea, if there is an issue with a project impacts in the town regarding resources, the conscom is also a good resource to go out there and check the wetland lines, you know, generally where the stream is. Just a thought, it's just a comment, really. You know, instead of the CEO who may or may not have experienced delineating wetlands, there's just, there's a...
I think they're, it's okay for them to, they want to make sure that the person who's officially supposed to do that, the CEO, is still involved in that.
Absolutely, yes.
Can I just clarify, just so that everybody understands, one thing that we're going to be talking about in terms of moving forward is the escrow system for technical peer reviews. So I think what we need to look at is whether or not something like verification of wetland delineation should be done by a contractor for the town versus a volunteer of the Conservation Commission, because it might affect, it might affect in terms of...
The latter or the...
The legal standing of the, of the input, so, and we can talk about that as we go forward about using, because I know the town has not in the past utilized the escrow system, but it's there, it's collected on all subdivisions, and I've actually talked to at least one engineering firm about doing technical reviews of the engineering.
Yeah, someone brought up, some towns have like a list of third-party consultants that they use. Yeah, that's an idea, have them on hold.
But again, as with the other issues, the Conservation Commission can certainly give opinions to work on, you know, any of this issue of any of the information.
Anything else on, excellent, thank you. So I think we're going then to the Hallwall subdivision, and this is for a sketch plan approval. And so a little bit, one of our applicants is here this evening. So quickly, the purpose of a sketch, a couple of things I want to clarify with everybody, the purpose of a sketch plan, this is a very informal first step required with the cluster subdivision, which they have asked to do, and it's an opportunity for the planning board to learn a little bit about the project, to pass on to the applicant our concerns or things that in particular they want, we want them to pay attention to. And at this stage, it's very early, so there's been no real formal planning, no engineering design done. You saw the, what is in fact the sketch plan, it says this is where we expect the road to go, this is where we expect the lots to go, here's, here's a trail that we're thinking about, I saw that on there, here's our concerns about streams, wetlands, and so on and so forth. So this is, doesn't get a formal vote on approval, and the next step after this is in fact a site visit, and if we move forward to that, then the preliminary plan approval. So just so we kind of set an expectation this evening, it may, this may look very informal, but that's sort of the intent of it. So with that, I would ask Mr. Thebarger, our planner, to give us a brief description of this, and he's also put his concerns on paper, and then ask the, the planning board to see, to comment on Mr. Thebarger's comments, and then the applicant will tell us a little bit, answer some of the questions if he knows he answers at this point. And then we'll also go back to the planning board to say, are there... And then we'll also go back to the planning board to say, are there any specific concerns you wanna look at? So, first step is, Mr. Thibard, please.
So I did provide to the planning board my review comments, and I'll just summarize those for members of the public. As you, Mr. Chairman, you indicated that the applicant is seeking sketch plan review for a cluster subdivision, and a, and a sketch plan review is a required step for all subdivisions. But with a sketch plan for a cluster subdivision, it's, there's a little bit more to it, and we'll get into the details of that. It's an opportunity for the applicant and board to informally discuss pursuit of a subdivision development on the subject property, and the applicant has provided, as specified by the ordinance, general information, soils, maps, and other documentation, to give the board some level of understanding of what some of the challenges of the property and the project might be. The main purpose is to ensure that the applicant and the board are on proverbial same page, so that when the applicant comes in with a preliminary plan, so for example, we're discussing a sketch plan at this stage for a cluster subdivision. The sketch plan stage is an opportunity to discuss the concept of what they're proposing, and if it's just simply to, as, as in the past happened so often, where the development plan is proposed, where there's land that is really not accessible, and that becomes the open space, and doesn't really have any relationship to the subdivision design and use. So, there are some specific guidelines in the ordinance for cluster subdivisions. It's an opportunity to just informally discuss before they spend a lot of time on engineering, whether or not the plan approach to this project is, is sound, and will end up getting successfully through the planning board if it meets all the standards. The meeting also provides an opportunity to flag key issues that will come up when the project does come in for application review. And I've identified in my review several issues. The first is the access to the site from Hollow Road. Second is there's a major stream crossing on the feeder to Dire Brook, and there's an existing stream crossing just down the stream from where the road is proposed that will currently access the site constraint, or flow constraint, so that will require some special consideration. As I said, the proposal to do a cluster subdivision requires a more detailed site concept plan at this stage, and the applicant has provided that, there's good topographic information, wetlands, a layout of the lots, as well as some of the other features. There is a requirement of a net residential area calculation to show that the no more lots would be achievable under this plan than they could do under conventional plan, with the caveat that there is a recognition that cluster subdivisions are more efficient from a design standpoint, and the ordinance specifies that the fact that they get one more lot doesn't nullify the process. There's, there is a recognition that they may get one or two more lots, but they can't go from ten lots to twenty lots. So that's part of the discussion of a cluster subdivision. The relationship of lots to the proposed open space is another issue to look at. The usability of the proposed trail system, and the potential for interconnection with other trails and open space. I know this trail, as it's laid out on the plan, crosses the stream at least once, if not more than once, and so that'll be an issue when the project goes forward, that should be at least everybody understanding what that's gonna be involved. The suitability of the proposed building sites in terms of slopes, set marks, and soil suitability, when you make smaller lots, you, they, under the ordinance, you can go from two acres down to one acre. That squeezes the opportunity in terms of slopes, soils, and wetlands. So each of the lots should be looked at to make sure that there's a good buildable site there without constraints. And there were a few on this plan that I think are questionable. The applicant has proposed to retain land for future development or other purposes, and I think, and with providing a fifty-foot access to that land, and I think there should be some discussion of that, how that relates to this project and potential future phases. The location of the property is within the Wellhead Protection District of the public well serving this facility, as well as the elementary school, and under the ordinance, if that is the case, then the school is required to be notified of this subdivision application. And we talked about already scheduling a sidewalk, and then finally, there were some code violations on this property in the past, in the recent past, and it actually went to court. It was a court order ordering correction of the violations, and payment of fines, and that, to my understanding, has all been resolved. The violations have been corrected, I actually inspected it, and also the fine has been paid according to the town manager. So as far as I know, that is not an issue for the review of the subdivision. This is also an opportunity for the applicant to generally bring up if they intend to apply for any waivers as part of their application. You cannot make any decisions on the project or such issues, but at least it'd be good to know if they're intending to do that. Not, as I think we mentioned, there's no notice to abiding property orders at this informal stage, and as I said, no decisions that you're expressor implied can be made. And it did provide in the packet before the applicant's solutions for GIS analysis that it did based on our information.
Any comments from the board on what, George is listening to?
Yeah, I have one. You mentioned a proposal to do a cluster subdivision, which requires a more detailed site concept plan at the sketch plan stage. How, how confident are you in the sketch plan that we received?
Well, I'm confident in it as a sketch plan, but there's the issue of you're looking at it and determining whether or not if you, if meets the design and intent of a cluster subdivision. And that's really a discretionary, and I think it's important to understand that a cluster approval under Durham's Land Use Ordinance is discretionary on, on the part of the board. It's not an automatic right, so if you do not consider that it meets the intent, which is in, I think it's section six point thirty-three, which talks about the intent of, of open space and the relationship with the lots, then you can determine that it doesn't really meet the intent. And I wouldn't make a judgment on that.
I think one of the concerns there with, on the cluster is, 'cause that's allowing you to reduce the, the average size, like ninety thousand square foot down to fifty percent of that. And with the sketch plan, I'm not seeing any square footage on those particular lots. That, that would be one concern that I would have. I mean, I can visually look at it, but without having those dimensions, that is a concern.
Yeah, I think along Alan's comment, for also the size of the open space, I think has, this has to be one-to-one with the lots, it doesn't, for what's labeled as open space, and what I can tell, it does not appear to match that, at least visually. The blue, the blue ship.
Again, you're, you're intending to, to do a presentation of the project. I was just kind of giving an overview and background on some of the issues that I've identified.
Good point, why don't we let Mr. Furman go ahead and do his presentation, and what you don't answer would...
Awesome, yeah. Yeah, I'll just take care of that one first. As, as the sketch plan, I'm well aware that all these lot lines, they already have, I was working on it today, kind of starting to hone it in, it's already, the law hasn't quite changed rather significantly, so before I go and start calculating areas, those are all large, forty-five thousand square feet, I can promise that, and the open spaces, one-to-one. It's a little, the open space is a little more complicated than that, 'cause you take out over half of the open space, has to not be wetlands. I think this actual open space is really nice-looking open space, you know, the wetlands are along the perimeter of our property, so trails along that, and, and having that buffer all around the outside of the stream, once again, creates a nice little opportunity for a trail system, and to George's point that there are streams across, and as I've dug into some of the details today, and those are things that I've had to adjust and get that trail system to actually work, and working out where that right of way's gonna go, and... Yes, there's also there's a much moving part, but really the, the, the concept that you're seeing there is thirteen small one-acre lots with a road that loops up through the higher land, minimizing as much wetland impact as possible. And as George was talking about, that stream crossing, it is a significant gully, the stream itself isn't significant, it means maybe two feet wide, three, four feet wide. And the culvert, that, that existing crossing we're talking about, I think it's a fifteen-inch culvert, and that, that's been there for as far back as Google remembers. And it doesn't flood, I mean, obviously it's a wetland in there, it gets damp, but, but as, as George and I talked also, my intent is to size that culvert, handle one-hundred-year storm. And it's, it's a large subcascway, and it will be a big arch, I'd imagine, coming through there, which will look nice, and, and then in the process of that, that other crossing will be removed at some point. So allowing that stream to kind of become more natural once again. Culverts have greatly improved over the last ten years. I think at the Freeport, you'll see a bunch of them, they put in those new big corrugated, large crossings, allow you to have a natural stream crossing, rather than throwing in three thirty-six-inch piers and calling that good. So, again, with the buildable lots, part of what I did today is I pulled that road up off that, that stream or that finger that comes up into the property there, as you come in straight ahead, I've taken a harder right as you right open up into that space, and get us up into that dry area. And there's actually an existing, this, this road, as you mentioned, this property's been utilized in the past, and a lot of that was as a gravel pit essentially, and a lay-down yard, so there's roads and trails that go all through there that, my intent is to tie into those as often as possible to get mitigate the impacts, but, yeah. What other details do we got?
So at the preliminary plan stage, you would define lot sizes versus...
I already did that, yeah, and, yeah. You'd have a building envelope, I think the streams get a hundred-foot setback, you got a fifty-foot up the front, twenty up the side, so you have just finding, actually creating those setback building envelopes and putting a house on there, kind of like we did at Bowie Hill, where you draw in the, the buffer spaces, draw in the driveways to give an idea of what this could possibly look like, and get everybody comfortable with the full buildout, so.
George, there's something else that was on that. I think one of the concerns is that Mr. Thibard's messing with, will be everybody's concern, is the usability or the quality of the open space.
Sure.
So, you know, you already hit the thing, no more than fifty percent of wetlands can count towards open space.
Yep, and actually, on the area that we're building, most of that wetlands is on the area that's gonna be kept by the current landowner, I think it's a purchase and sale agreement, the legal, the real estate, I'm not fully up to speed with how that's playing out, but that back lot is intended to be kept by the current landowner, he's gonna split off this piece as part of a purchase and sale, and so all of those wetlands in the back aren't even part of our subdivision, so like I said, that, the majority of our wetlands are all around the outside of it. I think we need, we need some large chunks of good land.
So is that creating a lot that's, has no frontage?
Has a right of way. But you're right.
Which one? Not what?
There is no lot, that back lot.
Oh, the back one?
And that parcel off the back right, that whether or not we make that a road.
Make what, where's the right of way?
Oh, and I've moved it, but...
The fifty-foot, leaves me for future access, that?
Exactly.
That goes with your mind?
No, just that, all the wetlands in the back, that top, your top right, your top. Your top, your top, yeah, that's all the big ones, right there in the, on the opposite side, too. Yeah, the, the stream kind of wraps around that top corner of our property.
So Charlie, on a, on a fifty-foot right of way, what's your intent, or where, where are you locating that road? The relationship to that right of way? The reason I say that is because some people put it right up next to the, your butters, and...
So, it, it, like I said, I messed with this today, so what I've done is I've taken that right of way, and those two first lots on your right, I've taken the road, I've swung it in, I've put those two lots on the inside of that road now, and there's no lots along the stream, and so his right of way's gonna be the first thing off the right.
So this is change, okay?
I moved two, like I just said, yeah, swapped those two lots over, as I was wrestling through it today.
So I would just recommend, and I don't know about sketch, how long the sketch plan takes happen, like the next meeting, but we're still, you know, I wanna see changes or sketch plan changes, I want you guys, want it fit, so.
Well, that's part of, so side, come sidewalk, you'll have the updated site plan, and, and again, that's part of the process, you can't expect to have a completed subdivision planned out before any of those comments, so you come into it with it, let me, I think technically do this, just like by being, or if you just draw on what you think it's gonna look like, coming to talk about it, and that is the sketch plan. And so that is, I mean, this, that is what you have right there, it is susceptible to change.
Will we be approving a right of way for future access then with this application?
Yeah.
So that's part of the application, right?
Yep, every, next stage, yes.
Well, I know, I mean, just in general, we are approving a right of way, potentially.
But is Charlie even allowed to create a new lot that has no road frontage?
I don't, I don't know, I wish anyone was here.
And?
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 I think the answer is no.
That's a habit of mine.
It would have to be a roadie.
That's a legal one.
Yeah, if I made that right of way to a proper street.
Well, but even that, it still has no road frontage.
It would be the road frontage.
If that, if somebody had named it as a street, then technically it would.
But right now...
Could be exposed to the law.
That's what I'm saying, if I turned that into a street, if I turned that into a road.
But not the way it's shown right there.
Right.
Can you show me how, wait, you're thinking?
So like that...
We can switch, you can have this one.
Okay, so we've taken this road and pulled it out that way a bit, right? And these two lots are now inside here.
Oh, okay, so the...
And these two lots aren't there anymore. This first lot starts here, it's, we're gonna pop that right of way in, something like that. He'll, he'll come in, he'll be your first right, we'll be another driveway to a lot back there.
But what, what is that lot gonna be?
One house. So I'll probably have to drop a lot and...
See, I'd have three hundred foot of road frontage on that.
It's fifty-three acres, so you get one free split, 'cause you get, you get one lot, if you take one lot off of forty acres, it doesn't count as a lot, if I'm being wrong, so you get one free one, that's our first free split. The rest of it, the lot that he splits off is going to be sold, is, is the purchase and sale, which will become the subdivision. So we need to keep a right of way.
Yeah, but you just have to, to be a legal buildable lot, and Durham's have to have three hundred feet.
Sure, so whatever this road is, I, all I need is three hundred feet of that road to go into the property.
Right.
Can I make a couple comments regarding wetlands and streams? First of all, is this stream located on this thing?
It is.
Where?
It's, it's right along that right profit line. So this is the stream here.
But I mean, you don't show it on here.
It's very clear.
But do you show it on this?
Vessel.
It shows on the GIS plan, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah, but it's not on here, so for your next, add that...
And I have the hundred-foot setback on the stream on the new one, 'cause a lot of this was done prior to the wetlands report, I had the wetlands for like two days before the submission, so I just put the wetlands lines in there, and he also obviously surveyed the stream while he was at it. Because otherwise, I went with the USGS one, which was like, not even on our property, it just starts after the stream crossing.
So yeah, add that in with the buffer, required buffer, that'd be great, that's my recommendation. Also, I would propose, I'd, the thought is, the wetland delineation was done in January.
He went back out, his GPS did, within the last two, three weeks, he had, he had a few spots he didn't flag as vulnerable pool potential, and he went and checked those out, and in that back right corner, he wasn't certain, because of the snow coverage, obviously, what was, what back there, the ones along this side are very well defined, 'cause there's a twenty-foot bank that comes to the bottom of them. The back corner, he wasn't so much cer- certain of, so again, he waited, seen it was gone, went back and...
Who did the wetland delineation?
Alex.
Kenmore?
Yep.
Alex Kenmore?
Yep.
In January?
Like I just said, he did the initial one in January, and then he went back recently, and GPS did flag it.
So I would propose, and this might be a vote or something we don't talk about today, that we have, this is a situation where we might have a third party come in and do a... So I would propose, and this might be a vote or something we don't talk about today, that we have, this is a situation where we might have a third party come in and do at least a check of the wetland delineation. Just because, a couple of things. One is, as you know, there was a violation on his property relating to wetlands. We've had a couple of instances, other instances, subdivisions, that there has been violations to wetlands recently. So I just think having a thorough look at these lines might be, not, not the full delineation, but just to review what was done to make sure.
Sure.
Let me, kind of following up on that, is this gentleman a professional wetlands delineator? Has he got all the?
Yeah, and he, the guy I usually use who did the last one. Pete Alex did more of his brave reviews and said he was as good as anybody, so.
Because if you blow smoke up or.
I, I.
You're worse, this is in great danger.
Take it.
Not threatening you, but with a professional engineer, there's, there's a way to do that.
I was just going to bring up this issue of the reviews, so I think that's what you're talking about, right? So just, again, this is a sketch plan, part of it is to talk about, no, no, to part, talk about the process for review. So the way that this ordinance has been revised, the land use ordinance a couple of years ago, is to establish three separate phases. First phase is what we're in tonight, the fifth plan review. Second phase is preliminary plan review. And then the third stage is the final plan review. So both from a timing standpoint as well as efficiency, what I would envision recommending is that when, and if you get to a preliminary plan approval stage. Where you reviewed the subdivision, all of the information that they've submitted. And you either feel comfortable with it or you don't feel comfortable with it, having met all of the criteria and standards of the subdivision ordinance. Then what you would do is give a preliminary approval subject to having the peer reviews done. Of wetlands, of traffic, of whatever technical issues. Strongly recommend that the engineering plans be peer reviewed as a standard course. And then that information in all the peer reports, if any, you don't have to require a peer review report, but I recommend on certain parts you do. Then that would, those peer review reports would come in with the final plan application. And what that will do is enable the applicant to continue the process and respond to the peer review reports before they come in for your final plan. So I think it'll really improve the efficiency of the process. Now, if there's an issue that you see is really troubling in terms of you don't think it can pass the subdivision standards at the final stage because of this. Then I think it's, it's fine and work with the applicant to say, look, let's get a peer review on this done before we give a preliminary approval, just so we can be sure. In the end, again, that's the one where you think it won't pass because it wouldn't meet, say, a traffic standard, as an example. Then you could have that peer review done before you make your final decision, preliminary approval decision. But I think in most cases, it would work well if you did peer reviews as a condition of preliminary approval and get those peer review reports back for your final.
Yeah, I like that idea. I just, the only thing is as a, also a developer, like knowing if there's going to be any changes to any lines. I would want to know that as a developer way ahead of time, just to give you time.
I, I feel good in the sense that, obviously, instead of Jerry, but the fact that he went out in the spring, I, I'd honestly imagine if they were to re delineate, we might lose that stream, which.
And I'm not saying delineate, I'm not saying re delineate.
No, but confirm, sure. That means that stream that's coming up into our property doesn't run all year, which isn't a stream anymore. So that'd become a nice.
So, but I, I do, I hear you there. I think the sidewalk, we're going to do that before pre-land, right? So I think that'll help too, maybe if we can get eyes on it and see what.
We won't take out that cross until after.
Okay, and one more thing regarding resources is I think there is significant wildlife habitat near, on, near this property.
I haven't seen it.
Part of the GPS, the GIS thing. Waterfowl, illegal bird habitat. So I know for the last subdivision we did, you did denote that.
Yep.
And so I'd like to see that on the sketch plan.
Which part of this is a wild?
So George did a quick GIS thing and it's really hard to tell.
The only, the only resource protection designations based on the state data would be the hundred year floodplain and the hundred foot stream setback.
Yeah, I don't think we've got any.
What about the water?
Waterfowl's like a big, it's like a big marshy wetland that you need there. And that's just not.
Why is that? Is that just a? So it says waterfowl, illegal bird habitat?
Yeah, those are just the GIS categories.
Oh.
That are, and those coverages are turned on, but.
Oh, okay, so there's nothing there.
There's nothing there. It's just, again, the floodplain and the stream protection.
Oh, okay, so you didn't find anything in search then? Okay, I'm sorry.
Not based on the state data.
Scared me.
The way you look at.
It's not a funny joke. Now you're saying banting turtles. Do it.
Okay, so there is a floodplain though?
The darker green is the floodplain and the lighter green is the hundred foot upstream setback.
Yeah, if you look at those contours, you've got.
That just barely touches the property.
Yeah, and I think if you were to actually delineate those, like I said, there's twenty foot reviews.
The dark green.
Yeah.
Right.
Any other?
Yeah, near the, so the biggest area affected is that, for a pride you come to, when it opens up.
The road, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, with that type of elevation change, flood zones aren't a lot of concern.
Two questions, well, others are thinking that I have in relation to Mr. T. Barres' comments on here. One is locate. The future trails. And so want to make sure they're usable and that they kind of connect to each other. Not sure that we want to, but as they're drawn down, it sounds like a change. You get a trail ends and you have to walk on the road to get to the trail, so.
Yeah, I think.
Interconnect them that way and.
You'll have to have a street crossing at some point, right? Because you can't have a circle with the road coming through without crossing that street at some point. So yeah, but like, like I said, I tweaked things a bit, but the idea is to keep that trail kind of along that stream, almost on the top edge of it, so you can be looking down.
I got to try to think of more of the end, where does it end in relation to that?
There are, there are some stream crossings that we might even put a trail cross, but it'll cross them over.
And then I will, you're going to, I think you did something similar to that at Bowie Hill. I came in at the end of that, but there was a plan to cross. Uh, streams, so you'd have a lot of erosion and other stuff.
Yeah, I think it's time to add the stream bed and.
Can I ask you a question a minute? Can you jump in real quick? On the trails. For the open space development, or question, development, when do we require that to be done in relation to the development of the cluster? Like for Bowie. I, I don't know how this is started already or not, but you're being sold now the trail system. I'm not sure how it's, what the status is of it. When do we, or do we not even?
I would think that we can make that as a condition.
Condition.
That it's.
That is, that it is a priority.
Yeah, that's what we did in Bowie.
I think so.
Put on a condition of.
So what do we say for Bowie?
I don't believe there's a timeline or that was the issue.
And there's, there's two schools of thought that, because and, and I, I don't have a horse in the game one way or another, ever force a raise. You can either have the homeowners get to choose where that plant, that path goes, like after they've lived there and they walk around.
Good thought.
But, trust me, I, I don't care one way or another. It doesn't make a difference to me, but.
One of the suggestions that's come from the public too has been that if we're going to have, we're making cluster subdivision. And we're having trails throughout this property. Why can't we have a priority of having that trail done first?
So what do we say for Bowie, guys?
I think we said that before they build on lots, they have to have the.
So before they start construction. Where, where is Bowie as far as construction goes? I know we've sold lots, right?
I don't think.
So just a thought, we just have, we just agreed.
Mr. Stone, actually, you want to comment? Answer that question?
Basically, you just going to put the trail line until they have access to get out there. So you, where currently we have four hundred, I think you can road in right now. So once that's in, we'll construct the trail.
So you should look at the trail as being part of the project infrastructure. So what I would recommend is that you look at it as being, getting, getting an estimate for the cost of putting it in, including it in the performance guarantee, which I think what you're concerned about. Making sure that it gets done. Whether it's there when they start construction, I don't think is the issue. I think the issue is making sure that it gets done. And so.
But when?
If you include it in the performance guarantee, you'll be right along with all of the other improvements. Typically, they have a construction period for the subdivision. It's no different than the road or any other part of the infrastructure. If it, if it is a required improvement as part of the plan. If you put in the requirement that there would be an engineer's cost estimate for doing it, a design, if it gets stream crossings on the, on the pedestrian system. Then that can be included as a performance guarantee, just like everything else.
I don't want to tie to CEO because before anybody live in there, please walk on the trail.
That way, all the infrastructure is there.
I'm thinking both, that it is in fact part of the bond and then performance guarantee and then also tie it into the first certificate, you know, for, for certificate of occupancy or, or whatever.
Yeah, I think part of that is the issue of that, you know, they're going to be selling homes to builders, builders are going to be building houses. And so tying certificates of occupancy for the houses to the trails is not necessarily the best result.
I'm talking about the first one. I'm talking, in my mind, it is, you've got a subdivision, you come in to pull either, or a permit or whatever. Pulling permit, maybe I misspoke. It's pulling the permit. That trail's in, just like the road's got to be in, just like, you know. Or if there's a trigger that our nurse says three, three permits, then you have to go pave the road or whatever it may be, but, and it's also part of the performance guarantee.
Well, I like that subdivision we did of Rose Road, the road's not completely in, it's almost all the hustings are built.
Yeah. Really what we're talking about is following and making sure.
Well, also, and just making it, it's an important part of a cluster development is open space. It's a huge part of this. So like, I don't want, you know, want it to be an afterthought where, oh, I need to touch some houses for the man to start, since I'm not saying we're going to do that, but just in general, it's a very important part.
I think George, I think George's approach is a good approach.
Yeah, I'm thinking that we.
We can discuss it.
We'll make it a condition when we get to the preliminary, say, performance guarantee and whether we just tie it to a permit or not, we'll.
I'll put another.
Discuss, but trails are easy to miss and the thing is we need to lighten the burden on road commissioner and everybody else and just go out there one time, see that the road's in and the trail's in.
Sure. Yep.
And then I thought too, there are quite a few wetlands and then the stream, and we probably don't want an impact.
Four foot path doesn't count as impacts?
What?
A four foot wide path doesn't count as an impact?
Yeah, that's true, but if we're, if you had to cross a wet area, that's going to be a bridge or something.
Sure.
Right, so just thought, we don't want to create.
Use these little log.
Impacts for a natural resource trail, right?
Isn't that the greatest irony? Then you're going to build a wetland right in front of that wetland to treat the water running off this road. That's the neighbor part.
But not part of our overseeing. But I think the board was very happy with what you, we came up with or they came up with for crossing the trail, crossing the stream and crossing wetlands. If I recall, so the same, we'd be looking for the same or better.
You mean for Bowie?
For all.
Yeah, yeah, no, you can say.
Yep.
Yeah.
So do you anticipate any requests for waivers? No, speak now forever.
Yeah, right, I don't, I don't think we should. I think the biggest hurdle is we need to get that right of way back and get that road, street frontage, figure out how to do that. Actually, you know what I'll probably do? Is that little part of blue right there on the right, I'll leave that for the first lot, first hundred fifty feet along. Where it says, I'll open the space, I've moved those first two lots, I'll give them that. So you'll have road frontage on the road.
Right, okay, I agree.
That's the way to do it.
So speaking of the road, if I can, okay, so is that an existing road already?
Up until we're, it's blue, so right there, yep.
Okay, and there was a permit received for this?
What do you mean? That was in there for a long time.
One of them.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
But there's a hall, are you referring, there's a house being built.
There's a house there, yeah.
Sorry, where is that?
Right about where you're. Right about the road.
Back right about there?
Yeah.
And, no, not that far back, is it?
I think so. I think you're around the corner.
So you're going to have to widen the road?
Oh, yeah. I mean, the right of way is still going to be fifty feet.
And so that's where the stream is somewhere, right?
Right where the corner of the lot starts, right where you were the first time. Keep going, yeah, right there.
Yeah, Paul, this is right?
Yeah.
So there's going to be impacts to the stream and the wetlands, right, for that road widening?
Wetland impacts don't count when associated with the stream crossing, but yes, from a.
But you're going to.
From a literal, from a literal standpoint, we will attack the wetlands.
But for the stream, you'll need an impact, uh.
Yeah, for DDR.
And is that where the culvert, the new one's going?
Yep.
So can you explain that real quick? You said, is it fifteen inch?
No, so there's an existing crossing. See this, this road here comes down, there's an existing crossing, you see the break in the wetlands. That right there, there's, it's a logging road. Somebody went in there, put some college student in there, like you go back, I think I said like seventy-six. It was already in. So we're hoping to pull that out.
Why?
Just, it's not the right, it's not a natural stream anymore. You, you created a bottom that right there that. Obviously, it's currently not flooding anything out, but that's not the way that stream ever was intended to flow or operate. When the loggers came in and put that culvert, then they obviously didn't size it based on any kind of storm or stream bottom or they threw whatever pipe they had and carried on.
So it goes away and you put a new one in where the road, the new road is.
Oh, I see. So you take it out and then put it south or wherever it is. So.
Put some culvert. Make a better ones, yeah.
Gotcha.
My other question was the wellhead protection for the elementary school. So better, sooner rather than later notify the superintendent, I guess, of schools.
They typically ignore my move.
There is an aquifer protection district, but I think it's stopped short of the proposed development, so it would not be in the aquifer protection district.
Can you show that where it ends?
Actually, can we, yes, can you show that on the aquifer as well as the resource protection?
Yep, put that all on existing conditions plan.
Yeah, and on that note, I don't think it's noted correctly on your application. I think you're showing the district to be rural and ag, when really it's aquifer, the other one.
Oh, all three, whatever.
I don't know how we have to update applications to be more reflective of current.
This is just sketch plan. So it's RRA and RP and AP.
And you give it Mr. T. Barres' confirm all that stuff before the formal application.
And then also, this is a cluster, so we need to check that box as well on the application. That's unchecked.
Other questions, comments, any of that Mr. T. Barres didn't cover that you want to cover?
I think one of my questions would be, as far as the trail system is concerned. What is our value on it being a complete circle? You know, like so, for instance, down at this corner here. Giving a trail, like you said, that's a, that's a, if that's a stream, that's a new stream crossing, just so that we can access this?
Personally, it doesn't bother me that, you know, if the trail's kind of like starts there and goes all the way around and comes out and hits the road somewhere else, then.
And actually, with these new lots worked out, it's like one lot comes like that and this one comes further and the other ones, there's a big spot of open space here. That would be kind of a nice little, whatever people wanted to do in there, you know, you could have a table, because again, it's. Yeah, right next to the stream and. That'd be a spot where the chariot might end when you turn back around, so that will destination at the end of your trail.
I think we're open to that. I guess the concern would be make sure everybody has good access to it.
Yeah, yeah, right. Yeah, I've left the, so the end of my hammerhead, I've left that connected through two, so anybody can, even if they want to put parking spots, if they're in there, people can stop. I don't think we have it open to the public. I forget about what we did at Bowie Hill. Did we say Bowie Hill's trails were open in the public?
Would not.
They're not, so we're going to leave that the same. Yeah, we'll leave that the same.
Were we all comfortable with this being a cluster? I don't know, we probably should ask that first.
Well, yeah, my, my concern with the clusters are, are we actually creating a cluster because there is land that is undeveloped? And that's the only reason it fits into that category. And that, and therefore allows us to have smaller lots versus let's have less development. Instead of twelve, let's have six.
Well, it's the same amount of lots. The lot, the lot. The lot, the lot count doesn't change, and that residential count doesn't change. It's still ninety thousand square feet per lot.
But it just allows us, because it's undevelopable.
Right.
It allows us to reduce the lot size.
Sure.
And it's, that's something that I personally battle with, I guess.
It is, it's sticky, cause.
It is not, I'm not, I'm.
There's great arguments on either side of it, and it all comes down like, what's the guy's intention? If the guy's intention is to avoid, just to cut out the wetlands and leave them.
Exactly.
And, and sure, like from a developer's mindset, like that is their only priority.
Mm-hmm.
From an engineering mindset, our only priority is minimizing impervious areas and minimizing impacts, like that's.
There is a difference between a developer and a builder.
That's the truth.
Huge difference.
Yeah, my thought is the open space piece, right, like, is it a good plan for the residents? Um, I think the sidewalk will tell us, I would really like to see how wet this area is. Is this gonna be something that you have to wear waders to go through? Um, you know, is it something that people are actually gonna wanna do? Is this fully forested?
It's been logged at some point, but like I said, there's like little spots that he's opened up where he has lay down yards and small, it's all sand back there, it's very, and it is very high in pride. Those stream crossings are so well defined, it's almost though, yeah.
So if it's in our ordinance, it's, so therefore, we're binding by the ordinance.
What do you think, Russ?
Right, but we can, we have discretion as to whether or not we, we're okay with the cluster or not. I see both sides too, and this came up with, um, uh, the Truman, not the other one, Truman Day or whatever, um, thoughts. And basically just the access to the, to the, to the stream, I thought made sense. Had they not clustered, there wouldn't have been any shared space or connectivity to the rest of the property, unless it was okay to walk over somebody's lawn.
Right.
I'm obviously aware that, that this could be used to maximize lots or do, you know, do things like that, but I guess the question I have is in my head, does this open space provide a benefit to the people? You know, I think as opposed to the, the property boundaries just running all directly to the edge of the property and not having any trail at all? I mean, I certainly see the value in there being a trail, but I just wanted to throw that out there, cause I don't know what you guys think.
No, no.
We have the discretion to decide whether we wanna cluster or not, I think that's all of us.
And one thing I think is cool that I've seen in other towns, cause I know there's another subdivision that butts us, is when you start having multiple subdivisions tied next to each other, that you should, you tie all the subdivision, you tie the trails together. And you start to create a network of trails.
Yeah, the, yeah, most of what, the only thing that looks kinda funny on this plane is that, that one on the right hand side is just the kind of fifty foot buffer.
Yeah.
So, you know, is that.
And that's gotten bigger. That's gotten bigger, I pulled the road up and then actually it shrunk too, everything kinda, the road does a larger sweep, so there's a little more lots up into that left end.
Okay, that helps, I think that would help.
Yeah.
And it also gives you the space to walk. To Alan's point, if you, if we said no cluster, could you put, was it thirteen lots on there, right?
Yes.
Thirteen lots on there.
Yep.
And then we would have no open space, um, for use by anybody.
Right.
You'd have a longer. You should probably check with your client to see if he'd be interested in committing to the, you know, interconnecting trails if there were another subdivision that went.
I think that others are moves like pre-trail mindset, where it's like all the lots are front and there's some big junk laying out back.
I guess.
I wanna look at tax maps, I, I, I can't.
The other thing that's cool these days is, you mentioned the impervious, cutting down on the asphalt that's in the world and the runoff and all the gas and oils that run off with it, so.
Yep.
Yeah, I kinda, I kinda like the, I like the cluster, cause it does kind of reserve some open space and not just build up the whole, all that. Yeah, I think with the improvement of creating more open space and that, what's shown is kind of slower right now.
Yeah.
Will be a big, big help.
The bummer, the bummer for the developer from a cluster standpoint is what George is proposing to is that the building lots.
Get pretty tight.
Get tight, you there's.
Kind of limited when you can.
Yeah, the Bowie Hill guy, he'll let me all the time, like, I can't put a house, we can't put solar on this, we can't twist our house the right way, it's like, oh.
So what is the requirement, is it fifty percent?
So it's, it's the same, the, the net res calc is the same, you take the land that you're gonna build on, you divide, you take off the, the wetlands, you take off the steep slopes, you take out fifteen percent for the right of way. Which, that's a, that's a, I love, I love, that's a, cause I actually know the area of my right of way, so throwing in fifteen percent, it always seems kinda odd to me, but. Then, from there, you have to, you have to have half, it has to be open space, like, like we said, you offset half the land and then of that open space, to, to mitigate everybody's concerns with people just coming in and making open space wetlands, or wetlands open space. It says that, oh, I think it's fifty percent of the open space has to be non-wetland.
No more than fifty percent can.
Can be wetland, like, same thing, right. Half full.
Are your counts on here? Or they're changing anyways.
Yes.
Okay, so it would be really good, just as a visual, like, doesn't look like.
I'll print those out for our sidewalk.
Like fifty percent is open space, not.
I know, we want the outside of it, it's amazing, I'll put that out some.
It'll be good.
It is.
So, so to kinda keep this moving, cause we still have another, uh, thing, are there any, you owe us some information, obviously, before we go forward? And is there any other big topics we need to cover?
I have one more thing, sorry, one more thing, and it's just, it's just because, it's not just because, but, not turtle, do you want it?
No. Mr. Burnham.
I said it was fifteen.
Well, you said insanity, didn't you?
We, we have a desire to keep this moving, so.
So, um, you mentioned the judgment, um, on the, the property, um, can you just talk a little bit about what that violation was for, was it for?
I believe it was for not getting predicial use. Am I right, George?
There were two violations, one was the business being operated there without the condition of use permit, the other one was the construction of a foundation.
Oh, yeah.
Within eighty feet of the stream and, and it's resource protection.
His setback, his setback was based on our law that you had done a hundred feet and it's only seventy-five.
So it was a violation there.
And I believe he didn't pull, initially did not pull it right. So that's all been.
So that's all, yeah, that's no longer.
The foundation's gone.
Is, is there any gravel extraction or anything like that happening on this property right now? So all they're doing is building that house.
And that's not your own property, it's on a butter.
Okay, so, so nothing, so we're not letting the, let's say the whole property.
Hopefully he's hung it up still, I think that's about it, I think he's still, hopefully he's still picking up some of the stuff he's got stored out there, like with the majority of, so lay down yards essentially at this point, and it has been, that's why, that's why he's not.
Lay down yard four.
So, what's that? He's a, he's a builder.
So.
So his staffeling and.
So Jonathan Hayes, it sounds like this particular sketch plan is not in compliance right now, and he's going to be updating it and presenting it, is it on being a conjunction with a sketch plan and preliminary plan?
Do you think you can do that, I mean, where do we, we would say, yes, I mean, it's your risk.
All, 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 all I wanna do, I mean, my, my intent of coming into a site plan, a sketch plan, is to get the big concerns, and if there's any huge red flags, then maybe I pump the brakes. If I have to go get a consultant or somebody else to do a wetland delineation, which obviously we've done at this point, or if there's hydro concerns, hydrogeologists keep them out there, if there's concerns with wells yielding in the area. I don't think that's something I like to hear during a sketch plan, but I don't think, we're in Durham, so I don't think we're, especially since we're over aquifer protection, so I don't think we're gonna have water.
Cause one of the issues that I was looking at is under, the six point five is the sketch, sketch plan C six, and specifically talks about scale showing the proposed layout of streets, lots, buildings and all that, and that sounds like that's in our intention to.
Well, that's technically to scale, and that is a scaled drawing and.
To scale, but you have to box.
They're right.
Have any square footage on any of the.
Sure, they don't, that doesn't say that, that just says it's a scaled drawing, which is, I know there isn't, there, well, there hasn't been like a completeness process, but I almost feel like the sketch is because it's gonna change so much.
Yeah, exactly.
Like, I would wanna see it changed and back here in the sketch plan to be broad.
What's the sidewalk then, can we, can we accommodate that during the sidewalk?
I would rather us have a site plan to walk through though, and see it, cause if we're gonna walk through, we're gonna be like, oh, it might change, it might not.
Well, no, that's what I wanted to give you, that, that new sketch plan, let's call it, for the sidewalk.
Yeah.
So you'd like to combine.
Sure.
Up to.
Sure, so we're not gonna talk about the stream crossing, and we're not gonna talk about trails, we're gonna talk about trail locations again, but as far as your big concerns, none of them are all that.
I don't know, guys, I, 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 I don't know, I don't know, I really want another sketch plan thing event, but I don't know if we need to lump it in with the site, sidewalk. I think that it's gonna take a meeting and then schedule the sidewalk, or we can schedule the sidewalk now, but I'd rather see the new, the missing changes.
This should happen. Uh, uh, I mean.
Well, we didn't have, we didn't have everything.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I, what I think is, my understanding of the sketch plan, and is everybody can, is we give the petitioner feedback on the changes that we want made, which I think we've done a very good, everybody's done a very good job of today. So now it's his job to go back and put those together before the preliminary plan, but we have enough concerns here that we'd like to look at it in a sketchier form, if you will, than the preliminary plan, the sketch plan. And I'm not sure we can't do that, given some of the comments that we've had here, again, it, cause the sketch, we've talked about a lot of things, he's either gonna make them before the preliminary plan or not. But it would be a huge help if we scheduled a site plan and you have that available, because then we'll be able to see where the, the road goes, and it probably wouldn't hurt Mr. Burnham to put the acreages.
Sure, oh, yeah.
Square footage on the lot.
Again, that's all.
We've got a whole bunch of comments.
An hour ago.
Is there public hearing at the preliminary plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we should really see this again as a sketch.
So can I just ask you guys, are you, do you guys feel confident or comfortable getting him, we meet up there at the site, at trust, he gives us this, again, the revise is changing quite a bit. And then we walk in without sitting together, looking at it, talking about it ahead of.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, I wanna see a sketch plan that's got the changes, before we do the site, uh, before we walk through.
So if I hadn't said I was making changes.
We still would have.
Well, no.
You showed. What's that?
We still brought up those changes.
Sure, but we're sure we're already in the works with it. Sure.
I think you, you're. You're being upfront with the public. Yeah, and you, and you, you, you know, some of our concerns, eventually you're addressing them and the changes.
The more we do upfront, here's another, cause.
I, I get, we're not gonna.
Because we did.
Next time anyways.
We did cause a month delay, not through the petitioner's, uh, problem with changing, changing. Is it possible to schedule, we need to talk about scheduling the site visit, to schedule the site visit and use this some space to then go over the sketch plan, sample so we don't have two meetings.
We, we have actually done a site visit and we had a meeting right after that site.
If, and if everybody's okay with that, we will, that will.
I got, my, my point is, what's the difference between me trying for, I mean, there's not even anything to vote on tonight, tonight is technically just checking the box. So if there's no vote, what's to stop, what, what's to say that, I mean, I don't expect to get preliminary approval first, go typically ever.
What is the problem with, with having another sketch?
Well, because if we, because if we do a prelim next time and we go through the whole checklist, then at least for the next meeting, I know what I'm in for, I know I can hit, I can check every box again. But if we don't do a full walkthrough, and we don't review the project in its entirety, and we don't get the public's opinion, then we haven't moved anywhere.
Okay, here's, so we don't just keep having a discussion, here's my thought, is you give us a site plan, sketch plan, excuse me, and get it to us before, sounds like you're at the sketch plan level. And then we review the, that, and then we'll go, that will come back here, as, as I think the board has done before, go over that one more time, is that?
See that one more time, so you're saying go to the sidewalk and then come back?
And come back and just say, hey, I think I got, give us a chance to discuss, or we can reverse my order, we can do the sketch plan and then go look at it on the, the site plan.
I would do that.
The sketch, we should have the sketch, as should the public, before we do the sidewalk, cause the public is gonna be on the sidewalk too.
Yeah, and I think.
Changes, I mean, it's just, there's a lot of changes here.
There's not.
Well, it sounds like it.
I just, I just.
The road's changing, the lot size of.
No, lot sizes don't change.
We, we don't know what the lot sizes are.
The lot sizes are all forty-five thousand square feet.
Okay, but let's, let's hold.
So my point is that there's just not enough information, so.
So I think what we're, we're trying to do, we're trying, trying to accommodate two things, one is get all the information that we need, the changes we need, and keep the process moving, because.
Sure.
We did cost them, them a month through the, so either we do the meeting, the review of the sketch plan before, and we can use this or eureka or whatever, and we, we have to announce the sidewalk anyway. And then we do the sidewalk. Does that make sense?
I wanna do the sketch, we're doing it first, before the sidewalk, yes, so however that works out.
So I can just do it on the same day?
That, I just don't know that, you know, I guess, I'm one guy, but I just think it'd be good to have the sketch ahead of the sidewalk, so we can review it, get it the day of on the back.
Tomorrow.
Okay, so we'll, we'll set a date, and then depending on what we do, there'll be some period of time beforehand for everybody to, to look at. Cause there is no vote on the sketch plan, I mean, we're just giving him his feedback, and so he could go back to, if we go back time, he's saying, we're really concerned about this, so you run the risk of moving on to the preliminary. I think what we're trying to do is give you enough feedback to be comfortable, and so everybody understands, just cause none of this is guaranteed approval, we still have to check every block in the, the thing. So just cause we blew it to the next step tonight. So if we had a meeting five o'clock here, and the time is immaterial, but we have a meeting here, he gives us the new sketch plan, couple days before, that gives everybody a chance to look at it, we'll do the same presentation.
Say a week before.
I would say.
Back to you tomorrow.
Do we not need a certain amount of days ahead if it's not?
No, I don't, I would say we would need to be here, but we should give the plan a week before we have the sidewalk.
Okay, so let's pick a date, we'll start with, when do you, when do you get us to change sketch plan?
Tonight.
Okay, and I won't look at it, so you're saying tomorrow?
Sure.
Okay, so tomorrow, we could get that sketch plan, so a week from tomorrow, give or take, we're looking at a date for the, um.
The week of the sixteen? Sorry, no, you're getting it to us tomorrow, yeah, I would say.
Yeah.
But, so are we getting together to discuss the sketch first?
Yes.
Okay, so we're first meeting for that.
We'd be here first, we'd go over the sketch plan.
I don't know if we need to do that step if.
You're ahead of suspicion of two weeks.
I think the key is just so we have, has, we're not getting it right after cycle.
Why does the, I just have public care.
Well, they're not to discuss.
Well, no, it should be online, right? Do we get it, should we post it online?
It's a agenda, all the paperwork, information, announce, agenda, so.
Yeah, so I mean, you, you would get it to Mr. Tebar digitally, he would post it when you, you've got it, or whoever, Kevin, whoever posted it, and then if the public wants to look at it, they.
Yeah, I'm still a little bit unclear, are you talking about scheduling another sketch plan review meeting, or are you talking about scheduling a sidewalk? It sounds like you're scheduling, you're talking about doing both.
That, that was my thought.
So then the question becomes, is it gonna be a special meeting, uh, an extra meeting, or is it gonna be your next regular meeting?
My, my suggestion is just to schedule a sidewalk and with the requirement that we get a copy of the updated sketch plan prior to that sidewalk. So we have a chance to look at it, review it, and prepare for the sidewalk.
And as a continuance, or if they're, if we're not comfortable, or we can decide to do it, no, we still wanna get together as a group and talk about the site plan, we do that prior to the, the thing. That way we have a meeting, we get a chance to discuss anything that we don't understand, and we can do follow up with the sidewalk.
I would like to do that, just because I don't have a lot of time sometimes between when we get the plan and our meeting, like I am rushing right before, I, you know, I'd rather be able to talk about it, hear things.
Is there, so we got kinda two ideas to do it, which is everybody more comfortable with? Get the site, like the sketch plan tomorrow, and schedule something for a week from tomorrow, give or take, and then have a meeting that would be for the walk, and then do the walk. Cause we don't have to, I mean, at that point in time, uh, we've given him his feedback, if he doesn't listen to it, comes in with a preliminary plan, and we don't like it, it's his, his risk to disapprove the plan. And that way it's kinda one day, couple of hours combined, I, I like your idea.
And this would be a special meeting, kind of, to call it, to George.
Or a continuance of this meeting?
Unless you wanted to do it at the next, next board meeting. Unless you wanted to do it at the next planning board meeting.
I'd kinda like to knock it out.
Well, I don't know that we really need, we've, we've had the sketch plan meeting here tonight. I think all we need is an updated site plan to take a look at and go to the site walk.
So let's call it this then, we'll have a site walk where we meet here, we can go over any questions we have at that point. And then, so we'll call it a site walk with a, we'll just meet beforehand.
Yeah.
Tell the public we're gonna meet here, or Eureka, wherever the right place is, and then we all load up, probably better to load up in only a couple of cars anyway. So does that make sense to you, we're gonna have a site plan visit that starts in a building?
Yeah, I'm okay with that, Wes, what do you think?
But it could be very sure be, it may be that we all think that the changes he's made are good.
Why don't we just have, why don't we just have that meeting at site?
Well, I guess what I'm trying to get at with my comment is, like I was saying, it's good to have sort of an idea and have time to review it before you walk through a field. Uh, you don't know what you're looking at, so. He, we've seen this, we're, we've got this in our minds, we show up in five minutes before walking through a field of ticks, we've got a new set of plans.
Well, we have, he's hitting that too.
I know, I know, that's what I was driving at, that wasn't the case, now it is, so I'm fine. And I think we should try to get a special meeting.
Okay, so let's have a site visit, we'll start here. And then if no one has any concerns, or if they do, we'll address them, we're not gonna spend all the time on the testing.
Yep.
Um, and we'll go, then we'll go from here to the, to the site, but it'd be a short, here's the changes I've made, okay. Uh, and if we don't like it, we just say you run, you know, come to the preliminary, run the risk, I'd like to do that in the next week or two.
Okay, so.
Before the regular meeting.
He'll get it to us at least by the end of the week, right, by the sixth, so my recommendation.
Send a hot copy.
Sure. Our copies today.
And digital, so you.
Yeah, that would be great to have a copy from the field.
How many copies do you want?
Ten, yeah, whatever the requirement is.
So maybe, I don't know if anyone wants to do site walk on Friday, um, maybe Monday or Tuesday, the sixteenth or seventeenth?
Remember, um, if I get it to you by the end of this week, that puts next week and next week in play.
Right, thirteenth.
And otherwise the submission deadline for that, May the, June meeting is the eighteenth.
What, June, what?
The, your next planning board meeting, the submission deadline is the eighteenth.
Can we do it next Thursday, uh, one of the other key things that.
Point three, just going.
Okay, Mr. Burnham, Mr. Burnham, thank you, you're now cut off.
Yep.
Um, so, everybody who is gonna vote, so the five of us, we need to try to make every meeting going for, our rules is, you have to attend all the meetings at this point, so, uh.
What do you think about the sixteenth or the seventeenth?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth?
Yeah, just go for it.
Sixteen, that's more, yeah.
You have a pro, uh, but then we then postponed it another month for them anyway, because he's gotta turn it around on the eighth, the next day, he's gotta turn it around. So if we had it.
So wait, okay, say, say we were not gonna get, we wouldn't get this plan again, say, say that wasn't gonna happen. Do we still need the site walk before the preliminary? So we're still on that schedule, man alive?
Yeah.
So that's not part of the discussion.
For the audience, you do it.
So either, if we, are you guys okay with scheduling it, if he gets it to us by the end of this week, we have, we have it for a couple of days? Like, do you wanna do it the eleventh or the twelfth? Or do you wanna wait following?
I could do it to twelve. Twelfth working for everybody.
Um, what is the time between public notice?
How long is the, I came to this, though?
I don't think we have to public notice this, do we?
The site walk?
Oh.
Anytime the planning board meets, you have to publicly post it, but you can do it as little as forty-eight hours before.
Okay. So, I guess I'm kinda looking at the voting members.
What, what time do you need, I could do it later in the day, late in the day of the twelfth.
I'm thinking, because those of you who work five o'clock, but you know, it's. There's no time when the ticks, black flies and mosquitoes aren't gonna be there, so. It's for those of you who work.
This five o'clock?
Yeah, look at, yeah.
Five o'clock to you? No.
I'll be in Boston next week.
Fine.
We wanna know.
We have, we have the other, we have five members, so the twelfth and five. But we'll miss time, but he can FaceTime, is that, does that work? Can you, you'll have it to us in plenty of time.
And the other nice thing that I, I provided when we did Bowie Hill and, and I can give a little more tutorial, if you have that Google or, I can send you the, that K and L file. So that as you walk around, as you see the property lines, you see the roads.
Everything, everything needs to go through Mr. Burnham.
And the trail.
Yeah, but I, and the trail, all can be on it, on your X and R files.
So I think we're looking at five o'clock on the twelfth, um.
Meet here.
Meet here, and then we'll have a, I don't, the historic commission is meeting, do they meet here? On the twelfth, so we can make it the Eureka Center as easy as we can make it here. Thursday. Or meet here. You just have to bump it, if you're historic, kind of.
Um, do they meet that early?
That's the other thing, we're not gonna do that. The twelfth here will, will.
Probably just be here.
Yeah, five o'clock, meet here, and we'll, we'll go from there. And the intent is to take whatever time is necessary, but to go ask any questions resolved, and so please look at it well in advance. Get our comments ready to go, uh, hold down the, the idle chit chat, make those comments, and then go walk the site. So it won't be a full, you know, go through everything all over again, it'll just be the changes. And Mr. Burnham will highlight the changes.
So if I get you the digital copies tomorrow, um, that could be the planner print at the same time. Try to have that to Friday.
The printed ones?
Yeah.
Okay, that'd be great.
And is, can the poster stuff on the?
Just, I'm trying, cause the office closes at twelve thirty on Friday.
On Friday, I'm dropping off in the morning, probably.
So we'll ask Kim then to get them on, to get the digital stuff on, on the website, put that new meeting, five P M, whatever time.
Yep.
Get that on there here. Okay, I think we beat this puppy pretty much to death, so.
Do that again.
Next agenda item?
Next agenda item, please, and I think Mr. Burnham.
Yep.
We're trying to hold down the idle chit chat here, and it also comes through, so. All right, the next agenda item is. So capture, if you have any questions about what we've talked about, uh, it'll be on the video for the town, we get you, make sure you cover everything, so we don't have to go back over that again. So the next, uh, agenda item, and we'll do the same process, Mr. Thibard, if you would do an introduction of, uh, the Bowie Road subdivision changes.
Yeah, the applicant is seeking an amendment to the Bowie Hill, uh, subdivision, transfer seven point six acres of the cane land to the butter. Uh, just went through different ordinance requirements for amending or revising, and so the final subdivision plan. Uh, first, any changes have to, have to be approved, and you must make a determination that meets the same criteria and standards of the original subdivision approval. Uh, if it's creating any new lots, then you have, they have to go through the preliminary approval process as well as the final. Uh, if they're not creating lots, like changing the boundary line, uh, then they can just jump right to a final, uh, do it a month step. Um, it does require the, uh, submission of the approved plan, which we don't have a copy of in the renovation, uh, as well as, uh, the, uh, requirement that the revised plan meets the standards and criteria. And the applicant, all he's provided is justification for this, under the assumption that this can just be transferred to a, to a butter, doesn't raise any subdivision issues. There's just the cover letter explaining your intent. Um, the question I had and the concern is that the Parker Schoolhouse Road on the plan shows as a presumed abandoned road. And there's a couple of notes that are referenced, but they don't appear on the plan. And I did point out that the Parker Schoolhouse Lane is recognized as a street by the town, there are three addresses on it. So I think the presumption that the road has been abandoned really needs to be clarified by attorney. The reason that's important is that my understanding of the subdivision law is that if land is on opposite sides of a road, public or private, it cannot be considered part of the same lot, so the transfer of the seven point six acres intended to be to a butter on the other side of Parker Schoolhouse Road, as I understand it. I don't think they can, they can combine those two into one lot, so that's an issue that needs to be clarified. Um, and as I said, uh, we need to have the plan properly referenced in order to be able to prove it as an amendment to the subdivision plan. Cause we would have to sign off on that, and have to probably revise the business, correct? That's correct. So you need a copy of the old plan to go along with this new one? That's what the ordinance specifies.
And that's one thing, but the greater issue is, is, is now being proposed assumes that Parker School is a non-existent road, we believe it is. In fact, it's probably a road, there's three houses on it.
Yeah. So I, I, I brought that up with George when I mentioned it, uh, the road's not a right of way, and part of the reason we're giving him the easement, or the, the, if you look at the width of that lot, three hundred fifty, whereas the road front, you only need is three hundred. I think you gave him that extra fifty so he could make it a right of way, that he could actually fix Parker Schoolhouse Road and make it up. Cause right now that road goes like through his lot and often, there is no right of way right now.
So is that something we need to have, like the town legal look at?
Well, it, it shows on the plan, right?
Yes.
Can you, can you describe what the actual change is, like point it out?
Yeah, so that bottom's right there on the.
Parker Schoolhouse.
At the bottom.
Yeah, it's right there. Do you want it?
Yeah.
Being given to the.
To this.
Cross the street.
Uh, okay.
So the question is, what is that road, right?
What is that road?
Like, uh.
No, I agree, yeah, I agree, that, that is the question.
Can I interject?
Uh.
No, we're not gonna open it up at this point.
Well, I'm not opening it up, I have information as to why that road is a road. Right, right, it's on the butter, it's on the butter, you have to make it a, a town road in order to have your barriers go through on your property to build your home.
Exactly.
So you have a pri, that is a private road in, in, it's not a public road, right, right? It's kinda a town road, it's a.
Not a town, it's a private road, and, and when we, uh, originally built our house, which was the first lot in there, um, we had to put in a three hundred foot road in order for us to have three hundred foot road footage.
Right.
And so there's three hundred foot of actual road there, and then there was an easement, um, granted through one, um, to the people who owe back for one, um, one house lot. But they wanted two, and so what they did was, we had made our road on our half of the Parker Schoolhouse Road. And, um, they actually got easement from the person that owned the other half of Parker Schoolhouse Road. And that's where the easement is, right beside our little piece of road. So it's like our road got kinda like negated, and we now have, we figure we have a, the road footage on the easement, which, I don't know, it's a mess.
Well, I, 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 I think that that's the key question here, I mean, we, we could.
Yeah.
And so until we have the answer that, and Mr. Thibard can correct me, till we have an answer to whether that is in fact, what kind of road it is, because, and thank you very much. Um, it is a, if it's a private road, then what you wanna do, I think, is not, not doable. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Correct.
Cause that seems to be the question one, before we get question one answered, and it sounds to me like maybe we have that answer, but till we can, you're walking to have your attorney confirm, you know, our attorney, whatever we wanna do, I'd rather it wasn't the town's money, uh, at least see your guys' opinion on what that is, or you guys say it is a private road and we need to step back and do something different.
We, we knew that coming into it, we, we didn't know, cause the lot, cause that's a confusing story right there.
Yeah.
So what's the next step, George, on that, to the determination of?
Well, as I indicated in the notes, the applicant has a burden show.
Okay.
With the, with the status.
Okay, so.
And it sounds like it's a private road, so it sounds like it's a non-issue.
So you're just gonna drop it?
Yeah, okay, yeah, we can't add another lot right now. We'll do it, we'll, we'll come back in phase two, I mean, we can split it off in phase two, and it won't be a.
Phase two?
Yeah.
It's from below it.
So.
So John, I don't know if you want a motion to dismiss it, I don't think ultimately we take no action on this request.
Yeah, I think we need to do that.
I'll second that.
I take no action, it was just a draw.
Uh, that's, that's, that's fine, too.
You wanna, you wanna draw it, huh?
Yep.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank, I think that, oh, wait. We have one more thing to do, right, we've scheduled the site walk, we need to schedule the, um.
Workshop.
Thank you, ma'am. So I guess one more time, we can, if you can, or, thank you, Mr. Burnham. Thank you, ma'am.
Way to make.
Yes, so, that, that.
Okay, so what works calendar was for.
The D P.
All right, just to refresh everybody, maybe my memory, what we're gonna do in the workshop is, uh, we talked about comparing the subdivision ordinance versus the comp plan and bring things into, uh, compliance, or make sure they're working together and go through that. And then, um, the other thing I would like to add to that, if we have time at the end of the workshop, is the, uh, our bylaws are sixteen years old, and there's some things we may wanna do a review of and decide, um, for instance, but just whether we just talk about having the secretary, the fact that a member has to attend every meeting, is it possible that they just stay smart on a project rather than physically be? Those things are, would be part of what I'd like to discuss at the bylaws, overall, I think they're pretty good. So those would be my two topics for the, um, the workshop, and so, what's everybody's calendars look like, I think we're probably.
Um, can I just read something really quick, so I wrote down exactly what we decided to do.
Okay.
So at the workshop, we are going to discuss how the comprehensive plan, how it's aligned with the ordinance is regarding residential growth impacts and subdivision, so for the two things.
Okay, and then I would like, if we have time, and I, again, we're, it wanna be a six hour event, and we could always do the bylaws down the road, that's sort of a late addition. We do the other two things first.
Yeah, I would.
And we'd be lucky to finish the two things, I think.
Yeah, I would.
I'm thinking we'll have to do bylaws, a different workshop.
Yeah, that's fine, and we can prioritize comparing, you said it beautifully, making sure the comp plan and the codes are aligned, and then we can, we can get into the, uh, the second thing, which is probably a major discussion. So, two hours, I don't know, a juror convenience. And I know that's tough to find, and that does not have to be next week, so.
Oh yeah, I would say.
The next, our next meeting is the first.
Well, actually, Tim, when we leave back from Boston, so that you can join us.
Technically Friday, Wednesday.
Oh.
Are you a good friend? You travel a lot, right?
No, I'll be late Thursday.
And I'd like to see leave a couple of weeks in between, so that you're not slamming back to back meetings.
Yeah, and site walk on the twelfth, so maybe.
I, the week is the eighth of June, the fif, the first. I'm into June, I don't know, it's something we have to do in May, there's plenty to do in May, so I'm thinking June. Um, well, uh, so the first is our regular meeting, so.
The week of the sixth?
Do, uh, try to do that, what, kick, uh, Wednesday at six or is it, is it the day of the eighth?
Uh, is that, um, uh, planning board, I mean, uh, the, uh, Tuesdays, right?
Yeah, Tuesdays, my generator test is on Tuesday morning, so other than that, I'd pretty free that week.
You really do have quite the life.
I just panic if my generator works.
And then fill up his.
Every Tuesday at ten, eleven of us. Um, the eight, is the eight work for everybody?
Yep.
Do you, you wanna do a six, or six thirty, or five, or?
Um.
Two hours.
Six to eight, five thirty to seven thirty, I mean, I got, the folks who work in particular, what.
I don't like six thirty, but I can do six, I, I, five thirty would be really pushy.
Six thirty to eight thirty, gives everybody a chance to do what you're gonna do.
Fine.
Six thirty to eight thirty on the eighth, is the workshop.
Here?
Uh, yeah, I think.
Do we public notice that?
Yep.
Yes.
We should, yes.
Counselor hasn't.
Anytime you meet, yeah, I'll wait.
And it'll be kinda set up like it was before, or?
Well, the intent would be mostly discussion in here, we take public comments on each topic. And then discuss amongst us, you know, the, and so that kinda requires, the other thing is, before locking the data, it kinda requires us all to go through the comp plan, go through the ordinance, and make sure we know, you know, what things we were interested in changing. Or need to be changed, or, and then there may be things we wanna add or delete or whatever.
Mr. Chair, can I ask the board for some grace to bring us up a point of order question?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Could I, could I just bring up a point of order question?
Sure.
Or comment, thank you, I appreciate it.
You've sat through two hours.
Well, so I just wanna make sure that everybody's on the same page about what's happening with that application for the site walk. And the, when I'm reading in the ordinance, I just wanna make sure that all of the proper people are notified. If, if we're, you're doing this site walk under six point six, it says notice to a butters, and then they need ten days. Um, and then down, for this, for the, for the site walk, it says, if site walk is scheduled, public notice, meeting requirements of amendment statute, shall be posted and public must be allowed to attend. The purpose of the site walk is to help the planning board members familiarize themselves with the proposed development, site location setting, OVA. All substantive discussions of the project and testimony by members of the public must, this is important, I'm just trying to read it. Wait until the regularly scheduled public hearing and or meeting of the board. At the next meeting of the planning board, the names of the members of the board who attended this site walk shall be entered into the minutes of that meeting to satisfy public hearing record requirements, blah, blah, blah. So anyways, I just wanna make sure that all the boxes are getting checked, that people are getting notified.
Waiting for Mr. Thibard to just to cut off my name.
That requirement all comes under the preliminary plan application phase, which we are not there.
Which we're not in.
Okay, so there'll be another site walk, and that means? Might be.
So, there, there might be, and it sounds like there should be.
I think actually, if it's, uh, pre-application, I think it references that in, uh, six point five D. D, yeah, so.
It says, yes, it's.
Would have to meet the requirements for a site walk, for posting, and we'll need to look at what, forty, uh, four oh three and four oh six, talk about it.
Okay, thank you.
Do we need, we need an answer either tonight, and if, if, if Roy is correct, then we need to reschedule it under.
It is very, it is very interesting, under the sketch plan, and talks about that under, six point five D, when it talks about, talk about the planning board will connect the site walk, plus the subdivision. At pre-application stage, and it refers to section six point six one, which is the preliminary plan.
Correct, right.
So it's almost, I'm confused, it's a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, she brings up another point, that we don't wanna do it twice, because, you know.
So if we know that if they notify, or notify any butters.
George is checking apparently.
Is that the applicant's, uh?
I have, um, four oh three and four oh six. Hold up, please, one.
And I was talking to NSI, both your, both six.
So while he's doing that, and assuming, he's coming back, assuming she's correct, we start thinking about something other than the twelfth, I guess.
So fourteen days, right, is that then what we're hearing?
I thought ten, but no.
Or, sorry. This is not more than, not more than thirty, not less than ten, I think that's okay, maybe it's the reverse, but whatever makes sense, your brain hurts.
So just on the site walk, this says that shall be posted and public must be allowed to attend. The public hearing is part of the preliminary submission.
And I think there's, that's one of the things we probably just need to talk about, cause there are conflicting.
Okay, so just understand that the general requirements state that anytime the planning board meets, you must notify public. And there are various ways of doing that, some requirements are, depending on what you're doing, are more stringent matters. The ordinance specifies that if you are doing a public hearing, you have to do not just public posting, you have to put and lay it in paper. So four oh three, which is referenced by the ordinance, uh, statute, section four oh three says proceedings to be opened to the public, uh, record of public meetings, uh, audio or video recording, uh, maintenance record, validity of action, advisory. So it doesn't say anything that specifies the notice requirements, uh, under four oh three, other than, like I said, public recording of what you're doing for public record. Uh, four oh six says public notice, public notice shall be given for all public proceedings as defined in section four oh two. These proceedings are a meeting of the body consisting three or more persons. This notice shall be given in ample time to allow public attendance and shall be disseminated in a manner reasonably calculated to notify the general public in the jurisdiction served by the body or agency. And it talks about emergency needs. Uh, and there's nothing in there that specifies the timeframe.
So then, the, the question is, does our ordinance?
Yes, it does, under, under six point six, under, six point six E, talks about the notice to a butters.
Six point six E?
Notice to not, not later than thirty days, or.
That's the notice, that's the notice for the preliminary plan, not for the site walk.
Yeah, that's part of the preliminary plan phase.
Yeah, so I, in that same section, says, if a site walk is scheduled, public notice meeting, the requirements of that title that I just referenced shall be posted. So I think it's just a standard posted at least forty-eight hours.
Okay.
Before the meeting, so I think we're fine, for the twelfth.
So, um, what do we have to do to make sure that that posting does happen?
Tomorrow I will, I will let just, you know.
Okay, thank you.
And, and when, when that posting, what, what is the posting, so I make sure.
It'll basically be, put it on the calendar, uh, in state with the person, it is.
Will we get the?
And then when we get the plan, we'll have it, have that posted, just like you do your regular ones.
Okay. So it is, Mr. Chair, it's twenty.
That's it?
I'm sorry, it's eight twenty, it's not two twenty.
Where are we, are we still on the site walk, or we moved back to?
No, I'm gonna say maybe we, I don't know, we'll work around with that.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah.
I think of that. So we're just, we're sticking, before we do, we're sticking to the twelfth, everybody agrees to that, we'll get the word out. Ms. Roy, everybody else, if you would help us get the word out to.
Oh, yes.
I, I know you will. But I ask anyway, Kim, you'll get everything posted expeditiously? And, uh, I appreciate everybody's patience and everybody's comments, and thank, uh, we need a motion.
We already have.
Need a motion, I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're done?
Yes.
Thank you, thanks ladies.